The candidates for this seat are Sheila Casadean, Jim Baker, and Dave Perkins. The candidates have drawn numbers for the order in which they will speak and then for their opening statements and they are sitting in the same order. So begin with opening comments from Ms. Casadean.
Well, good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure to be with you and thank you for turning out. It's an important thing to be at these kinds of forums, to get acquainted with the candidates more than what you might read in the paper or just see us when we briefly meet you at the door. I am a firm believer that you can get a lot done if you don't care who gets the credit. And I've tried to live that since I first arrived in Rochester right after graduating from the University of Minnesota. And I have spent my entire adult life here in Rochester trying to make a difference for this community, whether that's as a manager of local programs, as a volunteer, as a community organizer, serving on boards and committees, starting organizations, or the 14 years that I had the opportunity to be Rochester's champion in the Minnesota State Legislature. So I view my career as being of service to the community, seeking the greater good, and trying to advance our community's interests. I think you, if you know me, you know that I have a history of being able to listen, of trying to bring people from different points of view together to find common solutions and to move our community forward. And I look forward to being able to continue that as an Olmsted County Commissioner.
Thank you. Mr. Baker?
Well, yes, my name is Jim Baker. I want to thank the League of Women Voters, the Post Bulletin, and the Chamber for this opportunity to address the voters. Addressing the voters is of particular importance to me because I'm not a career politician or a longtime incumbent, so I don't have name recognition in the community. I have, however, had a very successful career in management at IBM, raising to levels where I was responsible for large organizations and large budgets. And after retiring from IBM, I used those skills as a general manager of a local business employing about 25 people. So during my career, I've developed these management and leadership skills that I think apply directly to what's needed in a county commissioner. I am running for office because I want to use these skills to give back to the community. And I'm now at a point in my life where I have the time and the expertise and the vitality to serve as county commissioner.
Thank you, Ms. Perkins.
I'm Dave Perkins. I want to thank the League for putting on this thing tonight. I believe I've demonstrated a large leadership in serving on the Olmsted County Board. My leadership, I focus mostly on budgets and fiscal responsibilities. I believe that for every dollar that I collect from a taxpayer payer and invest, I want to get maximum return on that investment. In 2012, our budget is 1.1 percent less than it was in 2011. We've reduced our headcount, full-time employees in the county since 2006, by 109 people. And we're still providing some of the same quality of service to the people that deserve and need this service. And we must continue to focus on reducing the cost in the future. We, that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Our first question is from the League of Women Voters. We'll begin with Mr. Perkins. As you campaign and meet constituents, have you learned anything that has caused you to change your mind on an issue? What would that mean?
No, I haven't. I'm still hearing the same story that people want less government, cheaper government. And they continue, we cannot continue to tax people out of their homes. And I'm concerned about that because as our population grows older, we're having more retirees living in Olmsted County because of one thing, they're coming in from other areas because of the medical treatment they can receive here. But I think we've got to focus on reducing the cost of government, if that means consolidating with some departments from the city. We certainly should look at that. We've done that already in the dispatch. We've combined the dispatch center with the city of Rochester, Olmsted County. We've combined planning and zoning. And I think information technology is one area that we've really got to focus on, that we can't continue to have the city buy servers, county buy servers, and we've got to be able to work together and share our resources to reduce the cost.
Thank you. Ms. Casadean, please.
I think I'd have to echo Dave's comment that I haven't learned anything that has changed my mind because usually people want to talk to you about a problem they're experiencing and you don't really have a lot of time at the door to get into great depth. I usually find that you really need to bring a lot of different points of view together to really understand an issue before you change your mind. But what I have learned is some of the issues that people are concerned about right now. For instance, issues about adolescents who are having behavioral problems and whether or not we're equipped to help families deal with their troubled adolescents here in Rochester. Or the fact that there's a water runoff problem that seems to be a problem between the city and the county around Interlock and Lake, and it's sort of feeling in and that the residents there feel like they've appealed to their county, to the county and to the city, and they aren't getting results. And so what I'm finding is making a list of things that I know that if I'm elected, I will be doing some follow-up on to try and find some remedy, just as I did when we had the problems with the right-of-way acquisition around Highway 63, when that was a major construction problem and a major headache to all those property owners.
Thank you, Mr. Baker.
Yes, I would have to echo what Dave and Sheila said. The number-one issue that I've encountered is property taxes. And Dave hit the nail on the head there, is to reduce them at a minimum, not let them rise. I hear this mostly in the lower-to-middle income areas of the town, and I hear it from business owners. Some of the hot topics that I read in the paper, I almost never come up when I ask people what issues they have, but property tax certainly does. Another thing that is a first-time candidate that I have found interesting is how many people are excited that somebody new is running. It's encouraging for me, and it seems like people are anxious to see a little new blood in our government.
Okay, thank you. I want to remind you that you each have three rebuttal opportunities. You have a chance to do one rebuttal per question and three for the evening. Do we have any rebuttals at this point for our comments? No, thank you. Okay. Our next question will come from the Post Bulletin. We'll begin with Mr. Baker.
How do you feel about Silver Creek Corner? It's the home for chronic inebriates. Would you have support in its development?
Is Silver Creek Corner another name for the wet house? That was one I'd have to look at very closely, right off the cuff without having background in it. I would not support it. If there was extensive data said that that was an overwhelming economic reason for doing it, I would certainly take a second look at it. But that is not something I would go into it thinking I was going to support.
Thank you, Mr. Perkins.
Well, I went on record and I didn't support it, and I still don't support it because we're not providing upfront treatment for these individuals. We're allowing them to continue with their habits out there. I think the money can be better spent if we look at the homeless juveniles that was discussed earlier in tonight's debate. We could be focusing on providing assistance to those kids, make sure they stay in school and they can find out the dangers of what alcoholism can do to an individual as they grow older. And the other one is the money could have been a lot better spent on supporting our veterans that we have in Olmsted County. You know, we've got over 10,500 veterans living in the county, and they're all going to need help sooner or later.
Thank you, Ms. Casadean.
When you have chronic inebriates, you have a public safety issue because the law enforcement people have to pick those people up wherever they find them and have to either take them to detox, take them to an emergency room, get them off the streets so that they're not literally at risk of being run over or causing some other kind of harm. And so it's really a choice. It's not a pleasant thing to think that you have to spend taxpayer dollars on Silver Creek Corner. I know it was controversial, but you would be spending many more taxpayer dollars on those same individuals to take them repeatedly, time and time and time again, to detox. These are chronic inebriates. They have gotten to a place where they are really not able, not willing. In and out of treatment has not worked. And so it's really a more prudent investment for the taxpayer than to try and say, "We're not going to do that kind of program." I've had an opportunity to tour it when it was under construction and talked with the staff as they looked at this model. We know that it saves taxpayer dollars, it is more humane, and it protects the general public. I would have supported it.
Thank you, Ms. Perkins.
I'd just like to make one comment. I don't believe it was worth spending $4 million for that type of a building. There was other locations within the city that we could have probably placed these people, and it's a very expensive operation.
Any other comments?
Well, Mr. Perkins, I would say that was a decision that the county board made, but your comments were about not supporting the program, not the physical structure. And you'd really have to look at the long-term costs of other facilities, sometimes retrofitting them or using them operationally. The operational costs go up much higher. So I still think that it was a bold decision by the county board to do that, and I commend them.
Any other comments? Our next question comes from the Chamber. We'll begin with Mr. Perkins.
All three of you mentioned that property taxes were a top issue for your constituents or future constituents. What can the county do to reduce the property taxes?
Well, one thing we can do is look at how we streamline providing and delivering our services to the public. And the second is, we have to look at, work more closely with the state of Minnesota and try to get some of our mandates removed. We've got so many unfunded mandates that we have to provide the service, and we've got to look at working with the state on that. We've been working with them now for 20 years, since 1990. I pulled all of the legislative agendas back, and we've, every year, we talk to them. Just for one thing, in the last nine years, the state has transferred $137 million from the state funding to Olmsted County property tax owners. So we've got to work. We cannot continue to accept that kind of downfall to the county.
Thank you, Mr. Baker.
Well, controlling property taxes starts with controlling spending. It's setting the budget targets early, working with the county administrators to make sure that the actual budgets they put together meet those targets, and then continually working with the administration. That's on the normal side of it. I agree full-heartedly with Dave here on the mandates. The state and the federal have been all too free at sending down mandates that are unfunded and underfunded. I was looking at the county website recently, and I was shocked to see that one of the counties in Minnesota, in the cities, had done an analysis of their budget, and they claimed that 85 percent of the county's budget was driven by mandates. That's just not acceptable. We need to be working with our legislators, pulling together other counties to make sure our voice is heard, and doing all we can to get relief from those mandates.
Thank you, Mrs. Casadean.
Well, I agree with Mr. Baker that we need to be working with our legislators, including how they balance the state budget, because a lot of what they did to balance the state budget transferred costs to local units of government that put pressure on property tax. And so when our legislators say that they did not increase taxes, they did increase property taxes with many of the decisions that they made. I also think that we have to look at how we redesign services. This service delivery area that was mentioned earlier between the 12, 11 counties is promising, promising for the future. I mean, that, the analysis of that, if it were fully implemented, would have saved taxpayers in this region $6 million a year, would have saved $30 million over 10 years, I'm forgetting the right figures, but also would have saved the federal and state government. So we need to look at not only property tax, but how we're saving taxpayer dollars overall. And some of what we need to do is provide the services that we're required to provide more efficiently. And we've had some experience in doing that, and I think we can delve deeper into how to redesign services to get them to be more productive and less costly.
Thank you. Any other comments? Our next question is a lead question, and we'll begin with Ms. Casadean. What is your position on the zip rail?
On zip rail? Well, I have worked on high-speed rail for this community for about, starting in 1992. I think that high-speed rail needs to be part of our transportation future. If you drive back and forth to the Twin Cities like I do all the time, you will just be astonished at how many people we have driving in from the Twin Cities who work here every single day, and how many Rochester people we have driving to the cities to work every single day. In addition, we have, our main economic engine is the Mayo Clinic. And if they can't bring patients to Rochester because these short-hopped airline, air flights are not economically viable, we become, we have a big, big vulnerability as a community for our main economic engine. So we need to have a fast train that goes between the Twin Cities and Rochester, and eventually, hopefully, all the way to Chicago, because so many of the patients who come here to this destination medical community come from more than 80 or 120 miles. That is our economic future. It's at risk.
Thank you, Mr. Baker.
I have not looked at the business case for high, thank you, Sheila. I have not looked at the business case for the zip rail. Let me say this, I would support it if the business case is self-supporting, it has realistic and conservative numbers in the business case, and is modeled after successful high-speed rail projects that have proven not to be a burden on the taxpayers.
Thank you, Mr. Perkins.
As a member of the Olmsted County Rail Authority, I support the zip rail. We've got to make sure that we've looked at all of the pluses and minuses of high-speed rail between here and the Twin Cities. As Sheila stated, we may not have air service in Rochester in years to come because it's just not profitable, these airlines fly on short routes. We've got to come up with a solution to get the cars off the road with the price of oil, the price of gas, and the price of maintenance of the road. So I believe that we've got consultants looking at it. I'm waiting to see what the business case reads, but I'm sure within the next 15 to 20 years, you probably will see some type of a rail between Minneapolis and St. Paul in Rochester. It may not be a high-speed one, but it could be a medium speed.
Thank you. Any other comments on that question? Our next question will come from the Post Bulletin, and we'll begin with Mr. Baker.
What future do you envision for Grand Park, the Olmsted County Fairgrounds? What role should the county board take in shaping and directing that future?
Well, I think that we should continue to make modest improvements in Grand Park year after year. I am not in favor of redeveloping new fairgrounds for the county. Make it short and simple.
Thank you, Mrs. Casadean.
I would say in all honesty, I would like a bit more information about Grand Park. But you look at that land in the heart of the city, and you look at how much it's used, you know, for the fair, but also for hockey. Can we make better or more robust use of that facility? Can we make it into a community amenity that we can use for multi-purposes and that can be a source of pride and economic vitality to the community as well? How do we get the max, the best use out of that space? And it is a very substantial amount of space, and I understand that there have been, the visitor convention bureau and others have gone to look at other kinds of conversions that other communities have done. And we maybe need to take a deep, deep look at this and not just be held to our traditions rather than our future.
Thank you, Mr. Perkins.
Well, we're working with the Friends of Grand Park, which is a group that was put together by the Chamber of Commerce about four or five years ago. They've come up with some great ideas on how Grand Park should look, both from the highway and within the park. I think the way we designed the new hockey rink out there, building four, having four buildings tied together, has made a big improvement. We're working with the city on putting in rain gardens out there now to take care of the runoff in the water. But I'm sure if anybody would like to see a plan of what the future may look like at Grand Park, we have those down at the government center. And the Friends of Grand and Rochester Park Board, Olmsted County Park Board meets monthly, and this is one of their subjects that they are always reviewing and how we can better utilize Grand Park out there, because it is a very unique piece of property within the city of Rochester.
Thank you. Any other comments on that question? Our next question will come from the Chamber of Commerce. We'll begin with Mr. Perkins.
As we know, the county is made of townships. Are there any ways that you would change the way that the county and the townships interact?
Well, I think we have a good relationship right now with the townships. I'm not so sure we need 18 of them in the county and have a county board. But we do share services. They do provide road maintenance, probably cheaper than we do, but they are a different type of roads that they're maintaining out there. Within the county, we have a responsibility of, excuse me, of maintaining 535 miles of roads in the county. We take care of all of the bridges. There's 337 bridges in Olmsted County, if you weren't aware of that. Four of them are still wooden bridges. So we're working with the townships. I think we have a good relationship, probably the best I've seen in the last three, four years, and I hope it continues.
Thank you, Ms. Casadean.
I also agree that the relationship between the county and the townships have improved. I think that a lot of that goes to having more frequent communication and attending to what the township interests are, not just the county's interests. And I think I learned a lot in my last few years in legislation when I represented in a number of those townships, and found it very instructive to attend their meetings, listen to what they had to say, and find the ways that we could, we could work on issues together. So I think it's better. I think it can still improve. And I think that some of the inherent conflicts aren't going away, so we need to have positive relationships to be able to deal with those issues.
Thank you. Mr. Baker?
Short again, I think the working relationship is fairly good. Obviously, there's always room for improvement, but all in all, I think it's in good shape.
Thank you. Any other comments? A question from the audience. Without reducing existing transportation services and law enforcement, is it possible to reduce county services, the cost of county services by 30%? We will begin with Mr. Baker.
Look, I am a first-time candidate, so I don't have in-depth knowledge. Dave can probably take you deeper on that. My initial impression of that question is 30%? Probably not.
Mr. Perkins?
I'd have to say that 30% is a big number. And with the, with the way Olmsted County is changing and how law enforcement is working, our jail costs continue to go up every, every year. It costs us right now about $90 a day to house a prisoner down there. We have to provide the same medical assistance to those prisoners as anybody in this room is entitled to in the city of Rochester. So that is a big expense force. We've privatized that. We just did that in January. We are seeing the numbers come down. With, with the new technology that we can put in squad cars, I believe we can probably reduce the number of cars on the roads, but I'd be very cautious to consider that right now. But our biggest expense right now, I think, in law enforcement is, is the jail and the county attorney's office. We are prosecuting some tremendously big cases in Olmsted County, expense-ones.
Thank you, Mrs. Casadean.
40% is overly ambitious, given the fact that our community is changing, given the fact that we have, I'm at the edge of the baby boom generation, and we are entering a phase where we have more and more people who are dependent, either because they're under 18 or over 85, than we have people in the workforce. Those people often require some kinds of assistance from long-term care or in-home services. That can be quite expensive, and the county has responsibility for making sure that those people are protected. We also, as Dave has mentioned, excuse me, as Mr. Perkins has mentioned, we have issues with law enforcement. I worked in corrections in the 80s when we had 20 or 30 percent jail. We are long past those days, and we do not want to jeopardize public safety by curtailing corrections too extremely either. So I think 30% is not achievable. I think it is possible to reduce, to reduce growth in expenditures, and as Dave has already pointed out to you, the county did reduce expenditures overall last year.
Thank you. Any additional comments on that question? Our next question from the audience will be, go first to Ms. Casadean regarding septic systems. Should the county work with the city of Rochester to allow the city to handle and take care of failing septic systems, or to allow the county to take care of failing septic systems in the townships?
I'm sorry, I'm going to just add a little codicil to what I said earlier. Don't forget the point that Mr. Baker made, which is actually accurate, that so much of what county government does is required by state, by the state, federal government. So there isn't a lot of flex in the county's discretion in their budget. As far as septic systems goes, I think it really, the question really depends on where is the septic system failing. Is it, we had a good experience a few years ago, even though it was controversial at the time, with using some local option sales tax to extend city sewer lines into Marion Township to deal with some failing septic. We had a similar experience, a little more controversial and difficult, with some of the community from the neighborhoods within Rochester Township. So I think the question really depends on where are the septic's failing? Is there a logical way to extend the septic, the sewer lines? Is there a way to compensate the township for their costs? And what about the homeowners? So I think there's no, there's no one-size-fits-all answer to that question. But clearly, with our carstopography, having a failing septic systems around the county also means our water supply is in jeopardy for our community and for many communities, and so we do have to pay attention.
Thank you, Mr. Baker.
Failing septic systems is a topic that is a new candidate I am not familiar with, so I'll pass it on to Mr. Perkins.
Well, county is responsible for inspections of new and old septic systems. And we work very closely with the homeowners on that. We've also arranged that if a septic system has to be replaced, we can arrange financing through the state over a five- or 10-year period for these people to replace their septic systems. One example is out at Chester, Chester, Highway 14 East. We now maintain a station out there where we, all of the homes out there now are hooked on to a central system, and nobody has septic systems out there anymore. It's working out very well. They pay a monthly fee for that, and we manage it and we monitor it, and it's working very well.
Thank you. Any additional comments on this question? Our next question from the audience. Would it be possible to list on a real estate statement a detailed service-by-service list of where tax dollars are going? We'll begin with Mr. Baker.
Well, that information, if somebody wants it, is already available through the county government. And to go to the expense of detailing it on everybody's tax statement seems to me like not a good use of our taxpayer dollars. For those that need that information, it's readily accessible.
Thank you, Ms. Perkins.
Well, I think, if I'm not mistaken, that we have, what we put on a tax statement is kind of dictated to us from the state. But if you want the information, it's on our county website. I'll just, for example, public safety, which is the sheriff's department, the jail, and the county attorneys, $23.6 million, that is levy dollars that we collect from the taxpayers in Rochester. Public works, $9.2 million that we collect from the taxpayers. Although the budget for public health is $11.4 million, we collect $5.6 million from the taxpayers to support that. The rest is done by grants, fees that we charge for inspections, and then some of the service that we provide. And human service is the biggest one, $54.5 million. Of that, $27.4 is levy dollars. That information would be probably mean-boggling to a lot of people reading their tax statement.
Thank you. Any additional comments on that? Oh, sorry, Ms. Casadean, would you like to answer that question?
I don't think I have much to add from what the other two gentlemen have said. It would be very, very difficult to get to the service level that I understood for that. It would be very, very difficult to get to the service level that I understood for that question to pose. It is, you really do have to get into a great deal of detail and the budget sheets to get to a service level. We could do maybe something like a pie chart kind of thing to give you a general sense. But don't forget your tax statement also includes city tax and school district tax. So, when you start talking about all those services, it would be, I laughed, I kind of laughed when the question came up, because it would be multiple pages to list all the services. So, it becomes a difficulty and impractical, and then it's just like getting those statements we get from our insurance company, you know, do not pay this, this is a statement of what your charges were, it's an explanation of benefits. And you look at it, and you think, I don't even want this. Why are they wasting the money sending it to me? I think we might get into that kind of situation where we can do it, as Mr. Baker and Mr. Perkins says, electronically, online, and with, with more detailed categories for those of us who really want to pursue that.
Thank you.
I'd just like to add that before a budget is adopted, we have a truth and taxation meeting in December of the year, and the audience, the public is invited to that. It lasts about three hours, and we do go through the budget by different categories to show how the expenses are being spent. And just one example, in 2011, it cost every taxpayer $1,067 is what, if you took the population, divided it by the end of the budget, it's $1,067 per person.
Thank you. Our next question-
Just a second.
Go ahead.
Just an extra comment on what Ms. Cuskadon said, is I thought the Post Bulletin did a great job earlier this year, speaking of pie charts, full-page color spread of both the city and the county government with quite detailed breakdown. I thought it was quite a good piece of work by the, by the Post Bulletin, and should satisfy that questioner's answer, I think.
Thank you very much. Our next question will begin with Ms. Cuskadon. Would you support implementation of a drug court in Homestead County?
I know that a drug court has been proposed here many times. I don't know the reasons why the county board has rejected it. I know it's been very successful in many counties in having a great impact and getting people to, to be accountable for their behavior, change their behavior, and get on a good course. So, I'm open to that idea. I have not heard from the county board's perspective why they have not felt that they could fund that. I do know that in the past, our judges have felt that our, the judicial load for this district was really very high, and having a specialty court like that aggravates the scheduling for all other kinds of cases. And so, it may be that it came more from the court's perspective around manpower and human power to staff the courts than it did from any kind of budget perspective. But I do know that, that our county attorney has been a strong advocate, and has been very, he's very successfully in Dodge County and other counties.
Thank you, Mr. Perkins.
I, I would support the drug court, but right now, it's a little hard to finance it with our policy. We just don't want to add any new programs to the budget. I think we've got to do a little more looking at what the payback would be, and if the payback is great, is enough, then I think the county board would be receptive to supporting a drug court. Sheila said it's very effective in Dodge County, Wabashaw County, and I'm sure that as you peel it back, there has to be some savings to law enforcement to keep these people out of jail at $91 a day to house a person in jail. I think it's not a dead issue. We continue to talk about it. It comes up three or four times a year. Our county attorney is really supportive of the drug court, and he's got his people trained and ready to go.
Thank you, Mr. Baker.
I would be supportive of it if it will truly bring those long-term savings that both Ms. Cuskadon and Mr. Perkins think that, think that we would have. Again, though, I applaud the county board for being very cautious to add new programs in this time when we're trying to hold the lid on the, on the property taxes.
Thank you. Any other comments on that question? I think we'll squeeze in one more question before your closing statements. This has to do with gang population in the county. What are your plans for dealing with the increase in gang population in Homestead County? We'll begin with Mr. Perkins.
Well, first of all, we've got to work closely with the Rochester Police Department and our county, and the surrounding counties. We, we got to reinvent or restaff the gang task force that we had going a few years back. It's kind of gone by the wayside, but I think as we see the gang activity increase in the county and the city, this is a joint venture between us and them. The county cannot suppos, cannot solve the gang activity within the city or the county. It's going to take help from the city and the county and the surrounding areas to curtail the drug, gang activity.
Thank you. Mr. Baker?
Well, I would agree with Mr. Perkins that reinstating the, the gang task force, working with the city are imperative. I've been out talking to people, and I have talked to a lot of them. This is one of the topics that often comes up, is the feeling of safety in some parts of the, some parts of the community. So, it's certainly something that needs to, needs to be looked at, particularly for a community like ours that has people from all over the world coming in. They need to feel safe when they're here. Everybody in this room would agree with that.
Mrs. Cuskadon?
Our community has a history of finding ways that we can collaborate to solve complex problems. This is a complex problem. It isn't just about the kids who are in the gangs today. It's about what's going on in the broader community that's making them feel alienated, hopeless, a feeling like they need that kind of protection in the gang. And it isn't just about when they're teenagers or in their 20s, but it's what's happening to families and, and as they come into our community or as they get integrated in our community earlier, earlier in the children's lives. So, what's happening with families, what's happening with young children, what's happening with adolescents? We, I recall times that we decided in our community that we were going to take a stand against domestic violence, and we brought together a 60-person task force representing many different kinds of stakeholders, and we met for about a year and a half and came up with a plan for what we would do in our community that ended up being very cutting-edge. It was a five-year plan. We implemented that plan. We have the capacity to do that. It's going to take social services, education, law enforcement, public health. It's going to be, have to be a broad, community-wide effort if we really want to turn the tide and stop gangs from forming and stop, and protect the public safety.
Any additional comments on that question? We'll go on now to our closing statements from each candidate. You have one minute to make your closing statement. We are going to begin with Mr. Baker, then Ms. Cuskadon, and finish with Mr. Perkins.
Well, once again, I want to thank the League of Women Voters, the Post Bulletin, and the Chamber for this opportunity to address voters. You know, when this country was founded, one of the visions was that electric, elected service, the average citizens would step up and temporarily take those positions, step out of their private life, serve, and then return to private life. And the temporary nature of this would help keep those in service grounded to the real world, as well as provide a steady flow of new blood into the, into this government. And it's partly this ideal that brings me here today, is that average citizens need to step up to the plate and offer to serve. And I understand why more people don't do it, because it's extremely hard work, and it's expensive. But if average citizens don't come home, come up to the, come forward, and then we redesign ourselves to being governed by a political class who all too often sees elected service as a, a career opportunity. So, my name is Jim Baker. I am a well-qualified average citizen who is asking for your vote as commissioner, and I'll work hard, be a good steward of the position, and a good steward of our taxpayer dollars.
Thank you, Mrs. Cuskadon.
Well, Mr. Baker, I'm also a citizen of this community and have been for a long time. You and I both lived here a long time, although we don't really know each other. I would just say that the kind of citizenship that I've had has been extended not only when I was in elected office, but before and since I've been in elected office. I learned that good ideas come from people of all political persuasions, all points of view, all walks of life. And whether I've been a consultant, a community volunteer, or an elected official, I've worked with citizens to solve problems for this community. Earlier, Greg Wright talked about needing judgment and having trust, and I think that people in this community know that I've tried to apply my best judgment in their service, and I think they can trust me to listen to them. I've pledged to continue to listen to all citizens, and whether I'm in elected office or not, I will be working to find solutions for our common problems that are fair to all. I think that there is some value to experience. There's a value to people who have worked with, with a diverse group of people for many years to find solutions and advance our community, and I offer to do that and stand before you asking for your vote on August 14th.
Thank you, Mr. Perkins.
I'd like to also thank the League and the Post Bulletin and the Chamber for this forum tonight, and also I'd like to thank the people in the audience for showing up. This shows that there's still interest in local government. I'd also like to thank the people of District 6 for their support over the past several years. And for those of you who are new in my district, I picked up about, my district changed about 38%. I look forward to working with you and getting your ideas on how government should be changed. I think I've proven my leadership on the county board, which has produced many positive results. We've brought the budget down to where I think we're on the right track, and I will continue to represent you in a response, in a responsible way. The primary is August 14th. Every vote counts, and I hope I can count on your votes out there on the 14th. Thank you.
Thank you.